...meeting of November 6, 2019 to order. Please join us in the police election.
Please elect. Leave the flag.
The flag. The United States of America. And to a republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is also, please be aware that the meeting is being recorded for use on Internet and on a local cable station. I'd like to recognize the election up in Brockton because we got no news at all about that. And Bob Sullivan, who I've known for a few years now, he's the new mayor of the city of Brockton. I'd like to send a letter of congratulations, and we look forward to invite him down here. There's a lot of things that we've got to talk about on the line that's happening, and I'm quite sure I've already discussed a little bit with him, and see if we can move it. But I should like to send a letter of congratulations from the board.
Sounds good. It's a move.
Is there a second? All's in favor?
Aye.
Another thing that happened up there, Pat Semerella there, the O'Conne Planning Council, we just appointed a new executive director, and of course, Pat, I can't say much for him. He's done a lot for West Bridgewater down here. We will be honoring him of this board at a later date. He's still going to hang on with the new, but the new one is Mary, I don't know if you know Mary Walden? She was Eunice's secretary for years. In fact, I talked to Eunice and she says, "You guys really had a good choice there." And I says, "Well, I hope so." I says, "Because very energetic, and I think she'll do a good job there." And I would like to send a letter also to her, congratulate her, and we will ask her be on our agenda or the future thing, and come down and try to keep the continuity going because they are a big help to us down here in a lot of things that they do. Is there a motion to send a letter out to Mary?
Motion, send the letter.
Second. Any other discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
If the boards have anything to say at the meeting. Oh, okay. Save it for later. Treasuryman Collected, Scott Golda, signing your borrowing documents.
How are you? How are you? Great. So tonight, we have the annual municipal purpose loan. This covers our short-term borrowing, which is the things we vote on every year that we don't have to go out to bond for, stuff we expect we can pay off within 10 years. The total for the note this year was $3,610,106. You should have in your packet showing the breakdown of what is being borrowed. We ended up with four bids on it, and-
How do we do on the private interest rate there?
It's got 1.49%, which is good. Last year at this time, it was 2.55%, so we're down a full point over the last year. That's due to-
Can that spread to us there? Can we borrow money at that percentage? It's silly.
Our bond rating did increase a few months ago, so that helps, and the national interest rates have come down.
Okay.
Did you have any other questions about what's on the borrowing?
No, I don't.
Is that a fixed rate or a variable rate?
That's fixed for the year. These are one-year notes.
So how much are we borrowing against that?
3.6 million.
Okay.
So we just need to sign that.
How come the pumping engine is still a short term? Why wasn't that a long term?
John did that. I don't have a specific reason for you. 450,000, we don't try not to go out to the bond market too often because it costs us about $50,000 just to go out to it. So unless we're folding things together, we're not looking to do long-term borrowing, especially with the way the market is right now.
So the painting of the tank, that was on short-term borrowing too, even though that was well over a million? Is that how I'm reading this?
Yep. The water department had two different, one was painting the inside of the tank, and I don't know if the 1.4 million was, you know?
So it went out to short term because of the length of the paint, I believe. That the paint was only, it's 20 years, so they couldn't go out into a long-term note. That's why it ended up in short term, and that's what really affected our budget hugely way back a couple of years.
So what are the long-term rates versus the short-term rate? What are you looking at?
Right now, they're around 2% from what I looked at today.
Okay.
It's more volatile just because the economy is so unpredictable right now. So right now, the short-term rates are a little lower.
This goes to the DOR, saying that we will pay it back in a year.
Go ahead. You borrow this for a year, and you pay all this 3 million back in a year?
So in my budget, I have a, it's called a band bond anticipation note, and so we pay down out of that some of these things. The water department pays down there, and then the town, I have discretion on how much we're paying down. We generally have to pay down 10% of what we initially borrowed each year because these have to be paid off within 10 years.
So we exclude it? Are you done talking?
Yeah, well, I just, this is just in triple kit, the saying it's a tax-exempt note, and that we won't make any interest off of it.
So if you don't pay these off, then it goes on the next year with leftover, or you can keep adding to that? So that's like your budget, a loan that will never come down?
Well, it does come down. If there's, if I have not extra money, but if I have money in the budget, I can pay down other stuff faster. So we have a minimum that we can, we have to pay down, and then if there's more money in the budget, I can pay that down faster.
Thanks for coming in.
All right. Thank you, Scott.
So next on the agenda, Mr. Chairman, is ratification for our GIS coordinator.
Yep.
Ms. Taylor is here. If I may, I'll just spend a minute to let you know as to how we got here. We have had a part-time person, actually, Ms. Taylor had fulfilled that role for the previous year or so at the water department. With new EPA requirements under MS4 guidelines, and some other state requirements that we're required to comply with, it becomes increasingly more important to have a GIS person. It is a growing field, and there are universities out there now that are creating actual GIS programs and certificate and degree programs as a result. We originally had hoped to hire a GIS/IT network administrator. We quickly realized that that was not going to become a possibility through the screening committee that was named under me, and Linda Torres, the HR director, chaired that along with a handful of other department heads. I want to give Linda a lot of credit. She did a really good job. We received in dozens and dozens of applications. She vetted those applications herself. She brought them down to a manageable number. About 12 were identified for interviewing. About eight of them were interviewed, and then they brought that number down to two people. I interviewed the two, and per your hiring policy, I then selected Ms. Taylor. We had posted the job for between 50 and $55,000, and to work for, to be paid for two-thirds of it out of the town budget, one-third out of the water budget, all of which was approved at this past year's town meeting. I interviewed both candidates. Ms. Taylor was clearly the best candidate out of everybody. Not only did she have specific experience that we were looking for, she had the additional advantage that she had worked here in the past, so she was very familiar with our system, our people, and the maps that we are currently utilizing. So Ms. Taylor is here now. I put her offer letter in your package, so you would see it. We have hired her within the salary range, applicable to the benefits package that would be associated with our personnel bylaw. Offered her a one-year contract with a six-month probationary period, and she is here to answer your questions, and then I would ask you for ratification vote at the end.
So how's that? Reasonable salary for you there?
Yes, sir, nice.
Okay. You have any questions of us? You don't have? Okay. I understand you're doing a great job over there, so I'd like to keep you.
I'll make a motion to ratify the appointment.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
I was going to ask a question.
Oh, you can still ask a question.
I will second the motion, though, and then I'll ask my question.
Yeah.
So I'm not leaving you in suspense.
Yeah, go ahead.
Do we want to take the vote, and then I'll proceed?
All right. All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So just for the sake of our audience, would you mind just talking a little bit about what the GIS system does and how you will be interacting with it?
GIS stands for Geographic Information System, and it's a way of analyzing data geographically and spatially. It makes maps also, that you could print out and make a paper map. But in addition to that, there are databases associated with every item that's on the map. So for example, if you had a map of all the fire hydrants, you would have information associated with each fire hydrant that when you clicked on it on a map, it would come up and show that. Same thing with, it could apply to any other department as well. There's studies out recently, the election was yesterday, gerrymandering is a big topic right now because there's ways to analyze constituents, and where they live, and where they vote, and all those things. Anything that has a geographic location has more information that goes along with it and you can make decisions based on information you receive. Thank you.
This was a long needed position, it was needed for a long time. Finally, it's come. Glad, glad we're moving along.
Spent a lot in engineering firms.
Right.
And got very little for it.
You know, that's a great point, Wayne, because we have spent a lot more money in the past, and so by bringing it in-house, not only do we get the job done, long-term it's also saving us money.
Will Deborah be stationed at, will she be at town hall or water department, or is she moving from location to location?
So we're still working through that. She'll be worked, she'll be for the most, but she's either going to be stationed at the DPW facility or at the water department, and I think again, just on a weekly basis, that may change depending on need.
Okay.
Welcome.
Any other questions?
No.
Welcome. We look forward to be working with you. Thank you. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Wayne.
Good to see you.
Good to see you, too.
Yeah. Take it easy.
Thank you. She knew you were here.
Vic, I guess you can bring in James, I guess.
It's nice to have Neil here giving away money.
Yeah. Don't go there.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm James. Nice to meet you.
Hey, James. Yeah.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Sit down and relax. Maybe I'll start off any of your questions. Why do you want to be a police officer in West Bridgewater?
For right now, West Bridgewater seems like a great place to be a cop. I'm currently on the MBTA police, as I'm sure you guys have my resume. I've always, so working for the T is a little bit different. About a million people a day use it during the week. So it's not really like a community aspect, and I'm really looking for that community aspect for policing. I'm in school right now over at Bridgewater State. I did my associates at Mass. Soyette, and I've done a few papers on community policing, and that's what I really viewed myself doing when I went to the police academy and I did the, when I decided to be a police officer. I really want to see that community aspect. I want to go to the WBYA football games and baseball games and, you know, hand out ice cream cones and stuff. I really want to do that aspect of policing. But right now, where I'm at, I see so many faces, I deal with so many people that I really lost that aspect of community.
I see you talk fluent English there. You talk any other, any other language?
No, I do not, sir.
Okay. What would you do if you have a situation where you just don't understand the person and he's talking a different language than you're accustomed to? How would you, how would you treat that situation?
Actually, it happens quite often right now with the job I work, I work for. Typically, just calm the situation down, whatever's going on, then just try to radio over, call operations, see if there's anyone on that's working that speaks that language, say like Spanish or Mandarin or something like that. If not, I'm sure they can call other departments in the area, see if there's someone that can translate, or typically, there might be like a line, like a phone number you can call to translate that way.
So you'd call for help and get somebody that can-
Absolutely.
-relate with you, maybe any kind of moves. Yeah, I know that one of the problems we seem to have here, and we see it every day here, and I've mentioned it even before to other candidates, is our center of town. It seems to be that we have a joyous group that wants to come through that red light all the time down there, and-
Down at Hockamock?
Well, both there and the center of town.
Absolutely.
And I hope if you are a candidate, you would, you know, keep an eye on that because it certainly, you know, they don't, they don't seem to go through a yellow light. They go right through, I've seen them as many as 10 come through solid red, you know?
Mm-hmm. Well, yellow light and red light are both the same fine, so-
Yeah.
If they said, "I went through when the light's yellow," you can write them down for yellow, and it's the same fine.
Try to keep an eye on, there's plenty of work to do out there. It seems to me that our car there, all the way up on 106, there's a lot of activity all the time. Some of them are just fender benders at the market place, but it's certainly will keep police department busy.
Absolutely.
Okay. Anybody else want to go in here?
So tell us a little bit about your military experience. You're in the National Guard?
Yes, ma'am. I've been in the military since 2012, January. I was originally, I took the ASVAB, which is the military test you take when you enlist. I qualified for every job, and I ended up deciding to be a truck driver. Just something that I had interest in at a time, and one of my good friends was also going the same route, so I ended up, I ended up linking up with him, and I chose to be a truck driver. I was pretty young then. I'm glad I did it. It gave me a lot of structure in my life. Since then, I've gained rank pretty quick. Unfortunately, I turned down my next promotion because I planned on getting out, and I didn't want to hold a slot for someone else that plans on staying in. I've done one deployment to the Middle East. Yeah.
You've done a lot in a short time.
Yes, yes. I try to stay as busy as I can.
Good for you.
Absolutely.
Thank you for your service, too.
Appreciate it, ma'am. Thank you.
If we were to ask your boss, what are some things that you could improve in? What do you think he or she would say?
This is the one question that I knew was going to be asked.
So you prepared for it?
Yeah, I prepared the best I could. So I think if you were to ask my current employer, it would be that I like to take charge in situations, which is good, absolutely good, especially being a police officer. But he probably would like me to call for supervisor quickly because I like to, I like to be in new situations. I like to handle everything, but I think that they probably would want an extra person there, an extra set of eyes to know what's going on, especially working in Boston. It's always good to have extra officers there, especially for officer's safety reasons. I think that would probably be the main thing that they would say. Other than that, I can't think of anything else.
Okay. Do you see it being a challenge or a benefit working in the community that you grew up in if, I mean, there's obviously the challenge of knowing people, and also it could be a benefit. What do you think it will be more of?
I think it'll be a benefit, absolutely. I think there will be challenge at times, but, you know, you just got to take it for what it is. You get called to someone's house and something happens. You know, being a police officer, you sign that dotted line, knowing that you're going to be seeing people in the worst situations of their life, you know, at the worst times of their life. You just got to really mitigate every, every call, you know, and really think everything through. But I do, I do believe that this department would be a great fit for me. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
If we appoint you, when will you be available? How much of a notice do-
That's a good question. I'd have to talk to my girlfriend, but it looks like, I've kind of spoke with her a little bit about it, and she wants me to go as soon as possible, so I might have to give my work at least a little bit of notice, maybe a week or so at least courtesy.
I like that your girlfriend came first before work. Just saying.
That's another reason why I'm coming here. I don't know if you guys are familiar with the traffic on 24 and 93 in the morning, but-
Oh, very familiar.
It's not exactly comfortable to sit in every day, so do a lot of driving up to Cambridge in that area, so-
Oh, yeah.
It's a lot different than in West Bridgewater.
Now, you live in West Bridgewater now?
I live right now, I live in Brockton over on the west side.
Okay.
I just bought my first home. It's a little bit cheaper.
Yeah.
My father's a realtor in town. He really tried to push West Bridgewater on me, but I, my price range, I kind of wanted something a little bit more comfortable, you know, so-
Good to be fiscally responsible.
Absolutely. So we just bought our first home.
Congratulations.
So thank you very much. I just got a new dog, too, and of course, right before this, he ripped up his own bed, so I'm in my suit, like stuffed in the trash full of his bed that I just bought him two days ago, so.
James, you have any questions of us?
I have no questions.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, I guess we can step out, and we're going to make a decision tonight, we hope, and-
Absolutely.
We don't have the car today.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It's very nice to meet you.
It's nice meeting you, too.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I didn't realize you lived on Grant Street. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Hey, how are you?
Not bad, yourself, sir.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Hi. Nice to meet you.
Okay, I'll lead off again. Why do you want to be a police officer in West Bridgewater?
I've actually had the opportunity of working in this department for a couple of years as part-time. It's just, I've worked for previous departments before, and it's just the one where there's the most camaraderie, there's the most, where you're trying to do the most for the general public. I've never seen a department that's had so many community relations.
Okay. It's pretty busy, and, you know, for a small town, it's busy out there, there's no question about it, it reflects out here. All right. I see you talk influential English. Do you speak any other language?
No, sir.
Okay. What do you do when you get a situation when somebody speaks a different language than you? How do you handle a situation?
Depends on where I am. If I'm in the station, and it's on the phone, we have a translating program where there's a person on the other line that'll translate it for us. We also have the great opportunity of being right next to Brockton, where we've been able to call officers from there to do translations.
Because that's, it seems to be in the area, that could be a problem, you know? It probably appears we're so close to Brockton, and, you know, it helps if you have another language, but if you don't, you don't, you know? What do you feel that, that you would, you know, be in there working on a department that you would like to see changed? Is there anything in particular that you'd like to, or you would like to add to?
Myself, full-time?
Besides yourself. Besides yourself.
No, actually, I think that it's a, like I stated before, I think it's a great department that I've worked for. I mean, I'm extremely happy there. I really don't want to leave. I want to get that full-time position. I don't want to go to another department.
Good answer.
If we were to ask, although actually, this one doesn't, you work for yourself, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
You can ask me how I am as a worker.
So the question was going to be if your boss was to say, or to critique you, what, where could you improve? But I guess, how, what do you think your weaknesses are, and where do you see your improvement being?
I work too many hours doing the electrical. I mean, I, it's tough being a, it's tough being employed by yourself. There is nobody else for, to do the work for you. You do all the work. You do all the estimates. You go out and meet all the customers. You meet all the inspectors. That would be my weakness, is I just work too many hours doing that.
On your resume, you also mention that you are able to remain calm while dealing with stressful situations. Do you mind expanding on that and providing real-life examples of when you've-
I've worked the detail up at Barrett's Ale House with some of the intoxicated parties that just want to get on your nerves. There's fights up there, everything else. I've, I stay calm, so I may get arrested, but, I mean, I don't flip out on them or freak out or anything like that.
Thank you. Denise?
So I'm looking over your resume, and again, one of your extra specialties that you listed was strong interpersonal and written communication skills. Can you tell me what characteristics you believe you have that give you those strong skills?
Just being able to talk to people. Being able to just talk to them and get them to calm down instead of escalating the situation, de-escalate it.
What might you do?
Skill that had to be, it is a skill that I had to learn over, over years, but it's just, you talk to somebody like they're a human, and it goes a long way.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, well, I know, I think we covered it. Thank you.
When will you be available if you work for yourself and-
To start full-time?
Yeah.
I could start full-time tomorrow.
Okay. You have any question of us?
No, sir.
Okay. We'll step out in the hall, and we-
Want to bring the other one back in? Or you want to have a discussion?
Yeah. What's the board?
I'm ready to-
Want to have a discussion?
I'm ready to bring them both in, or?
Okay. Bring them both in. Stay right there.
Okay.
Yeah. When will you be available if you work for yourself and?
To start full-time?
Yeah.
I could start full-time tomorrow.
Okay. You, you have any questions of us?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll step out in the hall, and we
Want to bring the other one back in?
Yeah. Yeah. What's the board?
Um, I
Wanna have a discussion?
I'm ready to bring them both in, or?
Okay, bring them both in. Stay right there.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I believe the chief is gonna provide a recommendation to you.
Yeah, you know, this, this is one of the things that probably we do as a board here, is some of the hardest things we do is, yeah, and these appointments there, I know we've got two able-bodied, you know, candidates here, and
Thank you, chief.
We can only pick one, you know, that's the, that's the situation that we're in here now, but don't get, don't get discouraged if you don't go pick the son, because I understand there's something down the road, chief, there that's possibly we're gonna have to, this is just a replacement of the, of the one that you lost, right?
Yes.
You're still, you're still one down, are you? Right?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so, okay.
So I'll read this to the board, the honorable board of selectmen. Tonight, the board interviewed two good candidates for the current open position of patrolman. After conducting an extensive background investigation, including multiple interviews, I recommend today to board appoint James Cundance. James, as he told you earlier, is an Army veteran and a current police officer with MBTA Police Department. James has obtained his associate's degree in science and public justice, and he's only a few courses away from completing his bachelor's degree. James has graduated West Bridgewater and until recently, pretty much lifelong resident. I've known James for a long time, find him to be honest and hard-working. Additionally, James has completed the required full-time municipal police academy, which will allow him to start right away. I would like to thank the board for the conducive support of the police department, but again, tonight, I recommend the board appoint James Cundance as the next full-time police officer for the town of West Bridgewater.
Okay, thank you, chief. Is there any, any other questions, or is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the chief's recommendation and appoint James Cundance as a police officer.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second the motion.
Second. Any other discussion?
No.
Okay, you're called for the vote. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, sir.
Sean, thank you for coming in.
Thank you for coming in.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you.
I hope we see you again.
I hope so, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so, moving along here, huh? Okay. The lines in Board of Selectmen businesses, petition of civil service vacancy for a full-time police officer.
Can I speak on that, Eldon?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I, I had put that in a couple of weeks ago. We've had, recently, we have some new information on some staffing and academy start dates, so I think it's best at this time not to vote on my request and for this full-time position at this time.
You wanna put that on hold?
We'll do a couple of issues, but I will separately talk to you. So I, I respectfully request withdraw that, my request.
Okay, good knowledge, John. Have any problem with that?
No problem.
Okay, all right. Anything else you wanna say to us? Thank you for coming in, and
Thank you.
Thank you, Vic.
And prove, uh, meeting minutes of October 2nd, 2019?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Accept, uh, meeting minutes of October 16th, 2019. Motion?
I'll make a motion to accept them for review.
Okay, is there a second to that?
Second.
All right, alls in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, so voted. State plan review, special permits, planning board, Coben Convenience Store, a drive-up window gas station located at 506 West Center Street here. That's the Shell gas station, uh?
It is.
They gave there, and they're gonna what, tear down that building there and make, and make a convenience store?
That is correct. So what they would do is, they've already installed a couple of new tanks, the board approved that earlier last year. At this point, what they would do is that they would demolish the existing building. They would replace it with a new building. It would be a little bit larger. It would be more of a retail operations. They would still sell, it looks like they would bring in-house coffee, donuts, that type of stuff. Currently, there is a Dunkin' Donuts there. Their plant does not refer to a Dunkin' Donut, so I'm not so sure if they're gonna bring it in-house. Looks that, that way, but the, because it's going to have a drive-through window, that will require a special permit as well. It is in the water resource district plan zone, so as a result, the planning board has jurisdiction. There are no other current outstanding issues with it, and it would remain as a gas station as well. The one thing it would no longer do is it would no longer have or retain a car wash, which is up there currently. That will no longer be in existence going forward.
Okay, any questions about that?
No, I have no concerns with this.
No concerns.
All right, well, moving on. State plan review, special for Mediterranean Board of Appeal, expansion of existing cell storage yard with outside storage located at 359 and 401 Pleasant Street.
Yes, that's on Pleasant, that's on Pleasant Street directly across from IW Harding in where the current Atlas Storage Buildings are. That is the applicant. They currently have 13 buildings on-premise. They would be adding an additional 13 buildings for storage. This is where you have excess of surplus materials. You wanna store like furniture, that type of stuff. And then they would also be adding four additional buildings for people who would like to store boats or vehicles. It is not in the water resource district area. As a result, it is the zoning board of appeals that will have authority, and so they will be reviewing it for a special permit.
Okay, any, any?
I don't have any concern with this one either.
No concerns.
No concerns, so all right, moving to F. Act on the resignation of Adams Anderson from the Open Space and Recreation Committee. Is there a motion?
A motion to accept the resignation and send a letter. Thanks.
Second.
Is there a second? Alls in favor?
Aye.
All right, so all right, 2019 Town Veterans Day Parade. This year, the parade is in West Bridgewater. It'll be kicking off at, at 10 o'clock. And, so I guess we're all set for that. Any questions on that? You're gonna be?
I am delivering our transportation.
Oh, okay. You're gonna be driving one, and he's gonna be driving the other.
Yes.
Great.
Supposed to be a little chilly that day, maybe?
I, I don't know. It's supposed to be like, what, start off like 40 and go to 54 or something like that, so I just hope it'll be a good day. I mean, we've been out there in some real days out there that have been real fierce, so, so, hey, listen. I think it's more, it's supposed to be a fairly decent day.
Was, was the information about the parade put on the illuminated light at the dump transfer station?
I don't believe so. It was on Facebook in the town webpage, but I don't think on the transfer station sign.
Could we ask Chris to maybe put it up there, so more people are informed that we'll be in West Bridgewater this year?
Yeah. You wanna make that into a proper motion, or?
I'll make a motion that, well, we
I don't think we need it.
I don't think we need it. I don't think we need it.
To ask Chris to, if he could do that.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Excellent idea.
I have them sometimes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Municipal Building Needs Committee, secretary's position approximately 20 hours a year, and two vacancies on the committee.
Yep, so this is really just an FYI to the board and to anybody watching, is that the Municipal Building Needs Committee, which is made up of seven members, currently has five. We've had two recent members, both you've accepted their vacancy, their resignations. One of those people who always did a really nice job, Gail Chipotelli, was also the secretary to the board. It's only about 20 hours a week. It's honestly, I think it's like $360 a year is what, is what the payment was for it. So it's not a lot of work, but like every other board and committee, you always need to have someone to take the minutes, file the minutes, make sure that they're timely and accurate. And so really, just an FYI to you and to anybody listening out there, that if they need a 20-hour-per-year job doing minutes, that that's, this may be a possibility, that contact us up in the office. And also, the mission of the Building Needs Committee is that when we have extraordinary or unforeseen expenses related to infrastructure in the town, is that every year a town meeting, or just about every year a town meeting, we place an amount of money into that fund, so that we, we can be able to quickly assist anybody with those needs without having to call a special town meeting. So there's two vacancies, and if anybody has some, some knowledge, experience, or desire to be involved, this would be a nice committee for them to, to reach out, let us know.
Sometimes they start on that, and then they go to other things in the town here, you know?
Are those al, did you find out if those were alternates, or?
They did. Nope, they're not alternates. It's actually seven members, and there's five on there currently.
Okay, okay, we're moving on. Correspondent of the public determined the course of action. Public comments, period. Neil, have anything to say out there?
I have two things. When I was here the last time, I said something about the town meeting. We should put something in the mail, if you wanna start it early or whatever, but then it's like drifted to get more people there. It wasn't the intention to get more people there. So I look at my calendar every year, when's town meeting, that's it. I make a point to be there because of my tax dollars, but it was the people that get there, they have to get home earlier, like the seniors and stuff like that. Because if you see that meeting filters out at certain times, people are tired, they wanna, you know, they're used to being home at that time. But it's more or less to get people, maybe get the whole meeting in, while they're still there. I mean, I know once at 11 o'clock, and after that, you have to do what you have to do. But I'm just saying, like, there are seniors, even people, they have, they go to bed early because they have to get up early for work. But that was the purpose when I was saying that the last time. I mean, I just think of people, you have a budget now of 34, almost 35 million, they can't make one day a year to come to town meeting. That's their call. But the people that do show up, they start at 6:00, even if they say they can't make it at 6:00, but they're all right, you know? People wanna go home and go to bed, whatever they wanna do. And the other thing, at town meeting, when we vote for these articles, I'll just use the fence. When we start doing the fence, like if the, you approve of these articles, put the fence up at the football field. When we do approve them, when we get them done, we can put it on Facebook or something, say, here it is, it's already been done, that's where your tax dollars went.
It's a good idea.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
It's a, it's a great idea.
But you know what I mean? Because you spend it and all such, you know? Say, you know, the fence, I don't know, it's still not up, but I'm not complaining about it, but eventually it will get up. But certain things, like the drive park, we voted for that, and I'm not throwing stones at that, it's water under the bridge. Say we approved of it, but we never went forward with it. But say, no, we're not doing that because such and such, but here we are, we approved of this, that, and here they are being done. Like the highway department, they get so much money to repair roads, just say, here what we're doing, we do, they did Walnuts here a couple of years ago. Excellent job, it's done, here you are, there's your money, what, and that was that article, whatever it was.
So in summary, more communication.
Exactly.
The comments were your first thing about, happened earlier there. One of the things, because Denise should just change her, brings her in closer. And Anthony still has quite a ways to travel every day through that traffic. So the last thing we have to look at, the whole thing, at the time, yeah, but I can see your point, too.
But everyone, I'm just saying, I just threw it up, that's all. Don't change it because of my account. I'll be there one way or the other, but that's all.
So how do we, David, how do we go about maybe, you know, a query as to whether or not our residents would be interested in changing town meeting? Just to get a general idea, can we do a survey of some sort, even online survey?
We could put another one out there. We did this a couple of years ago. When I first got here, I had the same thoughts as Neil did. And so we actually contacted, contacted through Survey Monkey, which is very, a very reputable company. We went out, we did surveying. I can't recall off the top of my head, it was a couple hundred responses. Quite frankly, we tried to look at earlier. We looked at maybe even having it on a Saturday as opposed to a date during the week, and it was fairly overwhelming that people didn't want change. That's why we never changed it.
Was that an online?
Uh, it had to have been online, because Survey Monkey, so it must have been online.
It was part of our census. I think it was part of our census, but I remember right, it was part of our census.
But, I mean, we, we could do another one, you know?
Could we do it again?
We could try another one, but ultimately, it's your call. You know, it's the only people that have the authority to set the date and the time on the town meeting is this board. So whether you, we can certainly attempt to get some data, but if you feel, hey, what the heck, let's give it a shot, then you have the right just to, just say, let's make it 6:00 on, on a Monday.
Well, I think before Memorial Day would be better for most, most people, because you start planning vacation and all of that. So definitely before Memorial Day, and we had talked about 6:00, making it a little earlier. I know I was driving from Boston, you might have to leave a little earlier, but like Neil said, it's one day a year. So if we could impose on everyone to be there for 6:00, I think it makes it easier for the residents with children, so they're not staying till 11:00, and it is important.
Okay, we can, we can certainly look at it, Neil, and
Try another, do you wanna try another survey? Maybe something?
And if you, if that's what the board just
What do you think?
Take a vote, tell me that's what you want, I mean, if
I'd like to make a motion to do another survey, an online survey.
I mean, the, the only thing that I will say is that I think that we're all committed to, sure, let's give it a shot at 6:00. Although I will tell you, I mean, I've worked in two other towns. I'm involved in most other towns. Every single one's at 7:00. It can't be by accident. There's gotta be a reason for that. This town meeting has 250-year history in New England, in only New England, and it seems to be etched in stone. Now, that doesn't mean it can't be changed or modified, but my only concern about doing the survey, Denise, is that we do the survey. You seem to be committed to doing it, but before Memorial Day at 6:00, the survey comes back, it says we want it 7:00 after Memorial Day. What are you gonna do?
We go with what the people want.
Well, but, but my point being is, is that, okay, then if we're gonna do the survey, then we'll do the survey. But, you know, I don't wanna get yourself locked in where you feel strongly, let's give something different a chance, and then the survey doesn't, you don't wanna go against the information on the survey, because then we're like, why do we do the survey, right? So all I'm suggesting is, is that if we wanna be able to give it an opportunity of something different before Memorial Day, 6:00, maybe we just do it, you know, and, and try it. I mean, I mean, if you wanna do the survey, do the survey. But I'd hate to see the survey come in different than what you might be leaning to wanna do.
Well, sometimes you hear people complain, you know, about the time and, and when it is, and you can't accommodate everyone. We do our best, but I would like to try the survey, just to see, you know, what comes back. Are the complaints coming from the most vocal people, or is the change of time really what the mass wants? So I'd like to do the survey.
I'm fine with doing a survey.
So I made a motion to do a survey.
Second.
Okay, I'll go along with it, and I'll cover the vote. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So what I'll do is, I'll do a survey based on time, time of the year, so before Memorial Day versus in June, and we'll do it at 6:00 versus 7:00. Is that good?
Sounds good.
That's what we'll do.
Good. Okay, anything else from the public? I see so many people out there. Neil, you get a lot of support out there. Okay, if there's none, board members, you have any comments?
No.
Okay, Town Minister's report, update on the municipal aggregation winter rates.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just put again this on the agenda, so that way we could keep the public informed. As you know, a couple of years ago, we went to town meeting, and we accepted the provision to allow for municipal aggregation. Here are the new rates. The November 1 rate through our aggregation program is 11.326 cents, and the national grid rate just went up to 13.982 cents. So that's going to save everybody in town that is a part of the program 2.6 cents per kilowatt. If you use 1,000 kilowatts a month, which is about the average, that means you'll save $26 a month, and over that six-month period of time, you would save $159. Again, they don't have to do anything for it, they're just automatically in the program. This is a postcard that has been recently sent out for anybody every six months. This, the vendor that we have hired, they conduct analysis, determine who is new in town, and then send this information out to allow people to know that they are part of the program, because that is the way the law works. However, if they do not wanna be part of the program, they have the opportunity to opt out. On page two, it will show three different mechanisms that they have to be able to opt out, between going on the website, making a phone call, and, and so it's pretty simple, and only takes them a minute to do it, especially if they just go on the website, but they can make the phone call directly to the vendor if they have any questions as well.
I know you've spent a lot of time on this, and it's, it's certainly paid off. Every little saving that we can have is great, you know?
Yeah, I mean, it's not a lot of money, but if every single month, somebody just gave me $26 for doing nothing, we'd all be happy. Second thing is a follow-up on River Street. As we know, a couple of meetings ago, we had residents in town that came. They were concerned about two things. One, concerned about two things. One was speed, and two is commercial traffic on that road. We sent a letter off to OCPC and forwarded copies of that to some of the members of the people that came as well. OCPC has responded. They are conducting a road analysis on River Street this month. So I anticipate by the end of this month, or probably, or worst case, early to mid-December, we'll receive that analysis back, and that with that analysis, we could start to make some decisions, what, if anything, we can do. And the last is the museum for the Historical Society. They have added a parking lot sign. You can see right here. It's on the grounds of the field in the rear of the building. Nice, and it allows people to know immediately where the museum is because we do have people that question. You know, they know it's somewhere, but you can't see it from the road. Even if you go in the parking lot, you can't see it unless you drive all the way behind the town hall. So I think they did a nice job. It's up, and the Historical Society is happy, and, and to keep the expenses down, our highway department is the one that installed it. So that's my report.
So we, we've already started the sidewalks on Howard Street. Is that correct?
Yep. So, yeah. So my report last month, last week did exactly what Neil was saying was we went over a whole bunch of projects that have been funded at town meeting, and one was Howard Street that has started, and Weather Dependant, that'll be done over the next couple of weeks, or completed over the next couple of weeks.
How about the other second? I know we had money for a light there. Is, are we gonna be moving that along, too?
Yep. So we received $287,000 from the state.
Yeah.
Based on the East Street, East Center Street project, which cost us about $500,000, that means we're about $213,000 short.
Yeah.
So I will be putting together a warrant article for next year's town meeting, asking the townspeople to approve $213,000 or thereabouts so we can install that light. The money does have to be spent by the end of next year. So assuming approval from the town, then we would, we would get that light installed next year and, and have it up and running.
Yeah, I know Mary Waller, we, you know, we plan to, I plan to invite her down here, and maybe we, somewhere we can get that on the tipless. Anywhere we can get money.
I agree.
Okay. Better move this thing along.
Eldon, I have one last thing. I just got a video from Mike White of the access road behind Shaw's, and it looks like about 90% of it's cleaned up.
Yeah, maybe a little thanks to Mike who got on that, and it was a mess before. I went down there, and it, it is 90% cleaned up, and it's, you know, it looks, it looks good.
Eldon, if I can ask, who owns that property? And I, we talked about that before, and I followed on Facebook. They're pigs. I begin with their doing. It's illegal dumping wherever they go. They do it on Walnut Street, wherever they can find a place. It's probably just a quick hit and run, dump it out and take off, but.
The area allegedly belongs to the Jopons out there.
Poor kids, even if the town can, because it's an eyesore. It's really disgusting to see how people can just be ignorant.
People thought it was a town road. It's not. It has nothing. And a lot of people thought that Quaid owned it, you know what I mean? But he's, he's one of those. What happened there that, that I see, they fenced off behind the, that building, and when they fenced it off, that's where they were, they were using their dumpsters and everything else. And, and as soon as they shut that off, then they were throwing it out in the road, you know? Yeah.
Get rid of that stuff there. Get rid of the mattresses. They cost like 50 bucks.
I know.
We used to take it at the dump, just roll it up in half, and they'd take it, not no more. But they're gonna just dump wherever. But the point is, I'm just saying, if that's a hazard, I don't know who owns it. They could say, maybe you can, and maybe the town could say, hey, we can give you a few bucks just to keep an eyesore, because I'm sure whoever cleaned it up had to pay to get rid of that rubbish. I don't think they buried it.
Now that that's fairly much cleaned up or close to it, what, do they have any preventative plans from it reoccurring?
So I've been in constant contact with the owner. It's, so we will be meeting with him and trying to solidify a game plan going forward. We have a meeting scheduled coming up. We'll see as to what their, we've made some options or gave them some options. They haven't picked one. But we'll see what happens that comes out of this meeting.
When is that, David?
At this point, it's scheduled for next week.
Okay. So you're moving that along. Okay. Anything else? All good. Okay. I, I'd like to go on to executive session, and I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session, not to attend to open session, the purpose of conducting a strategy session in preparation for contact, contract negotiation for non-union personnel, specifically a confidential secretary. I'd like to take a roll, call, a vote on this.
Can you?
Raise, yes.
Raise, yes. We are now in executive session. Thank you.